Good evening, everyone. I'd like to thank you for joining us and welcome you to our October 9th City Council Meeting. Would you please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We get a roll call, please.
Councilmember Brigham?
Here.
Vice Mayor Russell?
Here.
Councilmember Walker?
Absent.
Councilmember Bagby?
Present.
Mayor Paula?
Here.
And Student Liaison Tucker Morgan?
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Report out of closed session, actions taken, City Attorney?
There's no action to report out of closed session.
Thank you. Conflict of interest declaration. Does any City Councilmember have anything to declare this evening?
I wanted to ask on this issue, since I have property near Times Square.
Could you talk into the microphone so people could hear?
Okay, I will have to recuse myself on item number four of the consent calendar because I own property within 200 feet of that property.
Okay. Okay, very well. Okay, agenda review, regular session, any changes or deletions from councilmembers? Seeing none, we'll move on to public comment. Any person wishing to speak to the City Council on any item not listed on the agenda may do so at this time. Members of the public have a right to speak on any items on the council agenda during that item. Pursuant to the Brown Act, the City Council is not allowed to consider issues or take action on any item not listed on the agenda. Each person wishing to speak must come up to the podium and speak directly into the microphone. Each speaker will be limited to three minutes and you will be limited to speaking once under public comment. Please, welcome and state your name for the record, please.
Moreno Neil.
Thank you.
Good evening, councilmembers. I just want to give you a little bit of an update. I really didn't want to get involved in the homeless situation, but I had an incident last night. I'm not going to say who it is, we all know. And I come out of my side yard and he's standing there. And he was very vocal. And he did it three times. So today, he passed my house, three times. I almost hit him, one time. Went on his head, slid on his head. This gentleman needs help, guys. He's gonna get hurt. Again, we also need extra patrolling. I asked the chief, he was very nice to call me, and we would like extra patrolling up and down and Mulberry, in our little area. I live on East First Street, my cross street is Mulberry. So if we can get something like this on the agenda, so we can all just discuss it, that would be great. I've been here five years, up until a year and a half ago. We loved it here. I put up a new fence around my home because of the homeless people. And it's really getting out of hand, guys. Can we at least take care of it and get it on the agenda? Okay? Thank you. I appreciate your time.
Thank you. And just so you're aware, it is on the agenda of the Finance Administration and Police Subcommittee. It's been on there for several months and our city manager can give you the date and the time of the next meeting. I encourage you to attend that meeting so you can discuss it. Okay? Thank you so much. Would you state the date and the time?
October the 25th.
October 25th at 6:00 PM. The time has been moved specifically to allow people who work to make sure they could be there.
Thank you.
Thank you. And that's at City Hall in the conference room. Thank you.
Please, and please sign the book there with your name and then state your name for the record.
Luciano Toninato, 299 Sheehan Drive. Honorable City Council. On 6/12/18, you unanimously approved--
Could you speak into the mic, please? Thank you, so people could hear you.
Yeah. On 6/12/18, you unanimously approved Resolution 035-2018. This resolution addresses potential fire hazard in the city as identified a fire protection district, which will then provide a list of uncompliant properties to the city for enforcement. I also refer to Ordinance 8.02.30, addressing physically the same thing. On 6/26/18, being encouraged by a concerned neighbor, I contacted City Manager Kelly, expressing our concern by the high weeds and low dry brush on the 42-acre Vista Oaks property. On the 27th, I replied the very next day, copying the Fire Chief Jenkins and Fire Officer Soder. Then on the 29th, Chief Jenkins stated the property owner will be sent up later to comply with CAL FIRE standards. On 7/1, City Manager Kelly informed the property owner of the formal knowledge and to provide a timeline to cut the grass. Thank you very much. I can't say enough for the city and their staff and the fire department for their quick responses. However, the Vista View property owners, Vista Oaks property owners, counting on the fire department being too busy with the many fires in Northern California made promises with no intention of keeping them. In fact, after, as I was coming and going from my vacation spot every couple of weeks, I see that they didn't do anything, and I contacted the city manager, the fire chief, and they just didn't do anything. By the way, usually that 42-acre parcel before these guys bought it was taken care of by cattle. They would put cattle in there to keep the grass down. These folks at one time got goats and put it in there and it was a sight to behold. Two days, they cleaned out everything. So the Vista Oaks property owner know how to take care of the problem. This is not a mystery because they've done it before. On 9/13, I get an email from Casey Clements, Vista Oak Property, assuring that the problem will be addressed by bringing in goats or us in the next couple of weeks. Okay, this is 9/13, this is three months after they were contacted. The funny part about that is that even we didn't realize that--
You have 30 seconds, please.
Yeah. Attached to this memo, there was a memo written from Mr. Tripperty, from Garden Works, stating his agreement with fire department and Cloverdale Planning Department to table decision till next year. These are the folks that want to put, instead of 19 houses, they want to put 33 houses over there, and they make all kinds of promises like they did here. I want you guys, when they show up here, to remember that. They make a lot of promises, but fruition doesn't come. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Shirley Davis. Good evening, Mayor, City Councilmembers and staff members. On August 30th, I communicated with the ad hoc committee that's working on the fire emergency procedures. And they did have a meeting, but I couldn't attend because I was on vacation. But I got to thinking that I would like to be a voice of more than one. So I've circulated a petition where we're asking for two fire alarms, parentheses, sirens, on each end of town. And in my communication, I also provided information from CAL FIRE Sacramento about this. 120 residents have signed it. So it reads as follows. "We need the undersigned hereby petition you to submit a proposal for two audible alarms or sirens to be installed in our town providing additional emergency notifications that would make our town safer." Senate Bill 833, I haven't got my glasses. Establishing standards for public warning process is going forward for Governor Brown's signature, which it already has. This bill will provide money for emergency notifications. Cloverdale is 2.7 miles from south to north of town in a bowl surrounded by hills with dry grass and abundant trees. If you are working outdoors, you may not know you received an alert on your cellphone. And many seniors don't use the newest communication technology, and they too would not know about an advance alert. We have a window of opportunity for audible alarms to be welcomed by our town with possible funding from Jib Wood's work on a major wildfire bill. Take this opportunity to make our town safer." Shirley Zane said, "We do need a better system," suggesting that maybe redundancies such as fire sirens. Maybe we need to go back to sirens might be the answer. So what I'm doing is I'm submitting this petition to you with 120 signatures along with the communication that I sent, so it would be on record. So basically, there's going to be 120 people, they're going to be watching you. We're going to want to know what you're going to do about this and what kind of action you're going to take. And I hope you do. Thank you.
Well, thank you, and we hope a lot more than 120 will watch this because it's an important issue. I'm going to ask the clerk if you could make sure that our ad hoc committee receives a copy of all this correspondence for their next meeting.
Yeah.
Okay? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, would anybody else like to address the City Council on any item not on the agenda this evening? Okay, seeing none, I'm going to close the public.
I will.
All right, would you please sign the book and state your name for the record? You'll have three minutes.
Thank you for changing the time to 6 o'clock for the Subcommittee meeting, and I spoke to Chief Jenkins from the Fire Department. He would like to be invited formally to attend. There will be other visitors there as well. So he said he would definitely like an invite from Mr. Kelly to attend. Thank you.
Well, thank you. And of course, like we said before, these are all public meetings. Certainly, we can send an email and invite him.
He specifically asked me to request that he gets an invite.
Okay. Would you please make sure that happens?
Mayor, Council, I'll be certain to reach out to Chief Jenkins and invite him to the next Finance Administration and Police Subcommittee with the meeting time in place.
Thank you. Okay. Anybody else like to address the City Council on any item not on the agenda? Okay, seeing none, I'm going to close the public comment and we will move on to the next item on the agenda. So I'm going to hold off on item number one because the officer is not here to receive the presentation, so hopefully he'll come in later. And so we'll move on to the consent calendar. All items under consent calendar will be considered together by one action of the City Council unless councilmember or member of the public requests that an item be removed and considered separately. Recognizing that Councilmember Brigham will be recusing herself on item number four, not voting on item number four. So anybody like anything removed?
I don't want to remove, I have a correction on the minutes tonight that I forgot to send to Linda, so.
Okay, there's a correction on the minutes, so we'll go ahead and remove the minutes so we can do that separately. And we'll remove item number four so we can vote on that separately. So now we're down to item number, to the one item, number three, which is, anybody like to have that item removed?
I'll move numbers for you, Mr. Mayor, of the consent.
I'll second.
Okay, so we have a motion, second, but before we vote on it, I want to make sure that any member in the public would not want to have that item removed. Okay, seeing none, we'll go ahead and we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, well, let's do a roll call vote on item number two, please.
Councilmember Brigham?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Russell?
Aye.
Councilmember Bagby?
Aye.
Mayor Paula?
Aye.
And Tucker.
Aye.
Okay, we'll go back to item number two for the minutes. Which page did you want to?
I just needed to let Linda know it was, just, it was Nick Caston, not Mick Caston, his name, you're not on, in the minutes. That was the only thing.
Can you tell me that again?
Nick Caston.
It was Nick Caston, not Mick Caston.
Okay. Any other questions?
I'm sorry, I forgot to send you the email earlier today.
Anything else on item number two for the minutes? Okay, seeing none, entertain a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, second, any discussion on that? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Ananamous approval of the minutes. Okay, we'll move over to Resolution Number 06, 069-2018, approving a final map for Times Square and authorizing the city manager, whereas does it need to transmit the final map to the county clerk recorder of the county of Sonoma for filing? Okay, any, somebody want to move the resolution?
Motion to approve.
Okay, we have a motion.
Second.
Second by Vice Mayor, any discussion on the motion? Okay, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Brigham?
I abstain.
Vice Mayor Russell?
Yeah, I can't do it.
She's recused.
She's not part of the vote.
Correct. I was just doing it for the record.
Okay. It's not an abstain, though, she's just not to be called up for vote.
Okay. Counselmember Bagby?
Aye.
Mayor Paula?
Aye.
And Tucker.
Aye.
Okay, resolution passes. Okay, we'll move on, we have a public hearing. And introduction and first reading of Ordinance Number 723-2018, add in Section 18.03.200, it's hosted vacation rental registry and Section 18.09.265, hosted vacation rentals to the Cloverdale Municipal Code, CMC, amending CMC Section 18.03.020, development review process, Section 18.14.03, definitions and changing all references of vacation rentals to non-hosted vacation rentals throughout the municipal code to ensure internal consistency will be maintained. City Manager.
Mayor, councilmembers, this item is going to be, the agenda report is going to be provided by Assistant City Manager, Community Development Director Kevin Thompson.
Mayor, councilmembers, this is a proposed zoning ordinance amendment that would establish a new use called a hosted vacation rental. Attached in your packet is a red line version as well as a clean version of the ordinance so you can see what amendments are actually occurring. Just by way of a little background, this ordinance has been to the Planning Subcommittee and two Planning Commission meetings. I would describe the Planning Commission meetings as a robust discussion. They gave us a lot of direction, much of which is reflected in the ordinance in front of you today. Ultimately, the Planning Commission did adopt a resolution recommending approval of the hosted vacation rental ordinance. They did request that staff bring the ordinance back after one year to review and propose any amendments that may be needed. If that does occur, then ultimately the City Council would be the ones approving those Through our code enforcement efforts, basically looking at Airbnb and other websites, we know that there are a few of these occurring in town. Generally speaking, we have not received complaints about them. There's one in particular we received a few complaints about that we have addressed. This ordinance, if adopted, would allow folks who are conducting this type of business to sort of come out of the shadows. It'd give the city an opportunity to impose rules. Also, it'll give the city opportunity to collect TOT revenue. Just a little clarification, in 2015, the City Council did adopt rules for vacation rentals, non-hosted vacation rentals, basically a house, I'm assuming a furnished house that would be rented out for short periods of time for vacation goers. Those are allowed with a use permit in commercial zoning districts. This proposal tonight does not amend any of those rules regarding non-hosted vacation rentals. This is more, this is the hosted vacation rentals, which would allow an owner of a home to rent out one or two rooms in their house typically for weekends or weeks, but no longer than 30 days. Just a summary of the regulations contained in the ordinance, the permits would be approved by the planning director, similar in a lot of ways as a home occupation permit, in a couple of ways not similar. One of the big differences would be that we would mail a notice, sort of a courtesy notice, to every property owner within 200 feet to let them know that this was going to be issued. And I think even more importantly, to make everyone in the neighborhood aware of the name and phone number of the person who will be conducting the business so that they can directly correspond with them if there's any issues. The owner must live on site, 120 days maximum would be the most that they could rent out the rooms. It would be allowed in residentially zoned, all residentially zoned and commercial areas. And then another thing that sort of the Planning Commission wanted and we agreed with was that they would apply for a building inspection prior to occupancy of the business. So the building inspector would go out and make check for life safety issues.
They have to be on site, right?
They have to be on site.
So we can't hear you, you need to talk into the--
The owner would have to be on site.
Okay.
Once the permit is issued, the owner will be required to submit an annual report to the city. Basically, the nuts and bolts of that would be giving us an indication of how many days it was rented out and how many rooms within the home. And if the council would like to add any additional information required in the annual report, now would be the time. There is a provision for the planning director to be able to revoke the permit through our, if they're not in compliance with the ordinance, that could be appealed to the Planning Commission. So our recommendation is that the council conduct a public hearing, and if you're comfortable with the ordinance, introduce the ordinance and waive the first reading. Raphael Veranda is also here, he's really the guy who's been shepherding this thing through, so between the two of us, hopefully, and the City Attorney will be able to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions from council? Before we open the public hearing?
No.
All right, any questions? Okay, this is a public hearing, I would like to go ahead and open the public hearing. Would anybody like to address the City Council on this item? Okay, seeing nobody rise, we'll close the public hearing and bring it back to City Council. And we have a couple of things here. Does any councilmember want to make any modifications or updates to this draft ordinance? And if not, then we will entertain somebody to introduce by title only for first reading.
I would like to make one comment. And just to reassure the public a little bit in that I got two or three phone calls on this issue from people who own their home, but, and actually, the two of them were older ladies that just rent their rooms out year round. And I assured them that that did not apply to them, that they don't have to, you know, if Aunt Sally comes and decides to move in, they do not have to pay TOT tax. That's a completely different thing.
It is.
But it had a few people in kind of a panic.
No, no, thank you for clarifying that, that's important. Okay, we have an ordinance here. Somebody like to introduce it by title only, first reading?
Sure, I will.
Thank you.
Excuse me. City of Council Ordinance Number 723-2018, I think I've got the right one here.
That's correct.
An ordinance of the City of Cloverdale, amending the Cloverdale Municipal Code, CMC, to add Section 18.03.200, hosted vacation rental registry and Section 18.09.265, hosted vacation rentals, amending CMC Section 18.03.020, development review process, Section 18.4.030, definitions and all references of vacation rentals to non-hosted vacation rentals throughout the municipal code.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, so a motion by Councilmember Brigham, second by Vice Mayor Bagby. Any discussion on the motion? Okay, seeing none, can we get a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Brigham?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Russell?
Aye.
Councilmember Bagby?
Aye.
Mayor Paula?
Aye.
And Tucker.
Aye.
So I just want to thank staff, I know a lot of work went into this and it's very well done, and thank you for all that hard work. Okay.
I had just one quick, also, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I was pleased to see that ADUs was included. I brought that up some time ago because I was concerned that if we developed them, they would become vacation rentals because that's a problem that has developed elsewhere, and I'm glad to see that they are specifically excluded. At the time I brought it up, I know that it was sort of dismissed, but I'm very glad that we included that. I think that could take care of a future problem.
It makes sense.
And not have it happen.
Yeah, it makes sense.
Well, good, well, thank you for that. Okay, we'll move on to new business, item number six, a discussion and possible action on the establishment of an ad hoc committee for assisting in gathering public input in the design of the future skate park in the Times Square area. City Manager.
Mayor, council, I'm going to provide a background, and I'm just going to turn it over to Assistant City Manager, Community Development Director Thompson. By way of action tonight, the council approved the final map for Times Square. That final map does include a parcel for future location of a skate park. Included in that parcel is also the rideaway for the extension of Washington Boulevard. But, as we know, in the site finding efforts that we've done for the overall Times Square development project, we've identified a future site for the home of a new skate park. And it's taken a long time to get to this point, but I'm particularly proud that we were able to, and council approved tonight, the final map. So once that's recorded, it will formally create that parcel that will enable us to start the process of designing a skate park. What we've done to date is enter into a professional services agreement with a firm referred to as Spawn Ranch. And really, what we want to do at this point is kickstart the design process. And what Kevin's asking tonight is for your feedback on establishing the committee. So at this point, I really just want to turn it over to Assistant City Manager Thompson to give you a little bit of background on the staff report and the direction that we're asking for from council this evening.
Thank you.
Thank you. So we have been under contract with Spawn Ranch since August, and I've been in contact with the project manager who typically, who probably will be our project manager for this project, and he recommended the formation of a committee, and I think that's been the council and community's will all along, so that's kind of where we are right now. So the role of this committee will be to provide input, suggestions, and design considerations. We've come up with kind of a suggested matrix of who might be interested in the committee, or the ad hoc, yeah, the ad hoc committee. This is certainly subject to the council's desires, but what our suggestion is, depending on interest, one or two councilmembers and Planning Commission members, one citizen, two student members, and two staff members. We were planning to solicit applications or interests through our Facebook channel and our social media channels, Facebook and website. We had a little discussion if we did get a lot of interest, that maybe staff would be able to whittle that down and bring some folks before the council for a final decision. We're open to any suggestions on how the council would like to proceed in that regard. So that concludes my presentation. We're excited to get started on the project, I know it's been a long time coming, and as the city manager mentioned, we do have the lot created now, once that gets recorded, so we can go full steam ahead. Thank you.
Thank you, and please let the record show that Councilmember Brigham recused herself during this. I presume it's because she has property within the proximity, so she is not here to participate. Okay, any questions from City Councilmembers before I open it up for public input? Okay, I'm going to open this up for public input. Would anybody in the public like to address the City Council on this item? Please come forward and if you would be kind enough to sign the book and state your name for the record.
Good evening, City Council. Ipo Lani Bovee. I am so excited for this particular agenda item, and I just want to make sure that the staff is aware that we have a current Facebook community private group with over 600 members that are very interested, and whoever gets assigned to this, I just want to make sure that there's good communication so we can share whatever events come up on our page. And we're, I'm more than happy, and I know a lot of us are, to continue to be a conduit for the community. So I just want to let you know how excited we are, and if you need any feedback, we've, I've also compiled, I've sent, I sent emails, I think about a year ago, of a whole list of possible grants that we could go for, and a couple of different ways that we could approach so we could fundraise. Still like to be able to contribute that to the city so we can fund this. So, thank you very much.
Well, thank you. And I know our Assistant City Manager's going to be reaching out to you early.
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers. My name is Bob Cox, I'm a member of the Planning Commission, and as many of you are aware, I have been a proponent of the skate park since 2007, long before I was on the Planning Commission the first time. Spent six years on the City Council-- Spent six years on the city council, and I'm back on the Planning Commission. I have had many discussions with the people at Spawn Ranch during the League of California Cities Conferences in many cities throughout the state, and I would like to be considered for this ad hoc committee if you so choose. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you for all your work on this. Would anybody else like to address the city council on this item?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council, City Staff, Chief. My name's Sean Bovee, City of Cloverdale, and I just wanted to take a minute to express my gratitude and appreciation. Thank you. It's really neat to see this moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Monique Evans, and I'm a fellow skater. So I'm really excited about this. I'm not even on a skateboarder, but I'm a roller derby skater, and really excited. This is actually going to bring the city a lot more people than you think to the city to skate, not just skateboarders. There'll be roller skaters, quad skaters, inline skaters, just scooter skaters. So I just want to say, put this on the city council's ear, that this is not just one type of skater that will be utilizing this, and it will bring a lot of money to the city over the years to improve, you know, our experience here and bring more of the cool factor to our city. So thank you so much for that. I also wanted to mention that, you know, considering maybe doing more than just one citizen on the committee, maybe considering doing two to three, because there is a lot of different opinions that what should be done with this project. So that's just my consideration. Thank you so much.
Great. Well, thank you for that. Would anybody else like to address the city council? Yes. Linda, could you help her with that mic, please? Yeah. Thank you.
I too am very excited for the skate park to be built here in Cloverdale, because we're usually here in Cloverdale, and sometimes it's kind of stressful to go over to Santa Rosa, just go to the skate park. And we're very excited for the skate park to be built here in Cloverdale.
Well, thank you. Thank you very much. Very well said, and we're all very excited as well. Thank you. Would anybody else like to address the city council on this item? Okay, seeing nobody, we're going to close the public input, bring it back to city council for comments.
I have a few. First of all, I have a feeling we just heard from a future mayor, but maybe a senator. I think we're all excited about this. I want to make sure that we remember, however, that there is funding required. And I'm concerned that as we move ahead, we do everything we possibly can at the staff level, and also at the volunteer level, to look into all the possible ways we can fund this. My worst nightmare has always been that we have a fabulous design, we're all excited, and we don't know where to get the money. So there are various resources, and we need to hit every single one of them, starting with ourselves as individuals. Put me down for donation.
Very good. Two million should cover your share.
Actually, thank you, Mr. Mayor. You'll be pleased to know, you'll be pleased to know I've got it at more.
Okay, any comments?
We're going to take all of it.
So I have just a couple. I'd like to see, oh, you do?
No, I do just, yeah, sorry.
Okay, go ahead.
Sorry, thought we were just three again. I just take to heart one of the comments by Monique, and I just, and I guess I have a question, and that is that we have listed one citizen member and two student members. So that's three, you know, civilians, I guess we could call them, or not, you know, non-city or non-elected. And I just was wondering if there might be some interest in maybe flipping that, or if there'd be, if we would consider maybe having two and two, something like that. But I think that it's a really good point, is that this is a skate park that, you know, obviously, you know, we're doing this, and we've had so much demand for something for kids to do, which I'm, you know, all for, but I also recognize that, you know, a lot of people who probably shouldn't be skating anymore, they do, there you are, they do. And so it would be nice to have a little bit more input from age groups and different demographics and different styles of skaters. So that's just something that I would be open to a little more consideration on.
Thank you. And I agree with both Councilmember Bagby and Vice Mayor Russell. You know, I really think we should look at maybe having just one council member, you know. Council members are on a lot of committees, ad hocs, regional boards. I think really one to bring back, keep the council updated, as well as on the Planning Commission, one member, and to keep the Planning Commission in the conversation, updated. But we really need to look at the citizen, especially those that are going to work hard to help raise money, because really, money is going to be a key factor. There's going to be, it'll take a lot of work, a lot of networking throughout, both looking for grants, both in the community, looking for ways to build and raise funds. So I think we should maybe look at maybe upping the number of citizen members, and I definitely think we need at least a minimum of two students, one from the high school and one from Washington, maybe even two students from each. And the hopes would be that they would meet with their, with the student body and bring, and keep that network and bring information back, because we really want this to be a community effort. So I think those that we select to sit on this, this ad hoc needs to be committed to reaching out into their peer groups and bringing back at each meeting. So everybody's in that loop, and the community's informed. And then, of course, bringing the newspaper into these to make sure we get it into the paper. But I do like the ad hoc. I think we should move forward with formulating it. I think we should ask people, you know, both on the council, Planning Commission, as well as in the community, to submit their names, and let's get this thing formed, because it's long overdue. We want it so that...
That pretty much, no, that, that's moving in the right direction.
So is that good feedback?
Mayor, Council, that's great feedback. We can certainly reach out and solicit for the members' interest in this ad hoc committee. And I guess the one issue is whether you'd like staff to come back with a recommendation, or whether you'd like us to bring it back for formal approval by council, or just seek feedback from, you know, seek input from the community, solicit input.
I don't think it needs to come back, no. I think we can go ahead, working with the mayor. I mean, I, we could sit and come up with, inform this ad hoc. Yeah. So, okay. All right, well, thank you. So I'm going to revert back. Before we go to subcommittee reports, we have a presentation to make. I see our officers here, and this is really good. So we'll get Councilmember Brigham back before we start. So before I make the presentation, I'd like to just say, I want to make it real clear, we truly support and appreciate everything that the men and women of the Cloverdale Police Department do to keep our community safe. Working together, we continue to make progress in our fight against crime, and we thank them, we honor them, and we appreciate everything they do for us day in and day out. We never forget that law forces officers, as well as all, even firefighters, all public safety first responders, put their life on the line every day to keep us safe. And for that, we are truly thankful for their service. I would now like to ask our acting chief, Stuart, to say a few words before we read the certificate of appreciation and present it.
Thank you, Mary, and the city council staff and the audience. Tonight, we're here to honor Officer Ricky Rhodes. He was chosen by the American Legion as the Police Officer of the Year for the City of Cloverdale, and that occurred on September 22nd. Officer Rhodes actually is our school resource officer, so he bounces between the different schools, and he teaches a different curriculum, gang and drug awareness curriculum, and also is involved with many other counseling services and devoting his time to the students and the community of Cloverdale. So I wanted to bring him forward tonight so you could recognize him for his efforts. He is certainly the conduit that we need to reach the kids and the older students in our school district, and does a wonderful job, very well accepted, and puts his heart and soul into it, so.
Perfect. Well, thank you so much for that. And so it's my pleasure, and I'll read it, and then I'll come down and present it, a City of Cloverdale Certificate of Appreciation to Officer Ricky Rhodes on behalf of the city council in recognition of the certificate of commendation awarded to you by the American Legion Cloverdale Post 293, Department of California. Please accept our appreciation for your outstanding public service to the citizens of Cloverdale. Thank you. Thank you so much for your service. Okay, we'll move on to subcommittee reports. Airport, we have Chair, Councilmember Bagby.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We met on October 2nd, and we discussed the Caltrans grant funding application for Pappy Lights, received an update on FAA-funded SIP projects, discussed lease agreement renewals, and representatives of the Pilots Association and Airport Manager Morrissey agreed to meet to discuss desired infrastructure improvements and a proposed airport dedicated fee. So we'll have more information on that at the next meeting.
Great, thank you. Okay, Finance, Administration, and Police, we have Chair, Councilmember Brigham.
Yeah, we did have a meeting on September 27th. We changed the meeting time later so more people could come. We talked about a number of items. The first one was the senior center fund request. They're requesting, their floor sink went out, and they had to completely remove the concrete, and it was, they had the work done, but they've only paid for half. They're asking us for about $2,400, I think. But staff was going to check to see what our responsibilities in the lease were, what theirs responsibilities are. But I'm real familiar with floor sinks, having run a restaurant, and when they're out, you can't wait, you have to get it fixed. So there's no fault on their part that they went ahead and got it fixed. So I don't know where that is, if you guys looked at all of that, but...
Councilmember Brigham, we're still working with the senior center on determining the funding for that work that was already performed. We do think that the plumbing systems is part of the building itself, and therefore it will be the city's responsibility. This was an expense that, you know, again, normally, for these types of items, the city would solicit proposals and, you know, get competitive pricing. Obviously, it was an urgency to make sure the plumbing, you know, to rectify the issue. But because it is part of the building systems, we think it is something the city will absorb. And because it is on budget, we'll probably bring that perhaps as part of the mid-year budget update to seek a budget adjustment to cover this additional cost.
Good, thank you. Anything else?
So that's where that is. Yeah, we talked about the Bell ambulance contract, and we talked about the animal control contract, recommended, recommendations from auditor for collectibility of receivables from successor agency. A lot of these things will be brought to council, once it's sort of figured out. And then the big thing was the homeless issue. And quite a few people showed up at the meeting. It was, it ended up being fine, and people put their input in, and it's just going to be a continuing discussion on many different ideas from many different factions. So the next meeting is, let's see, on the 25th of October, and it's going to be put off until 6 o'clock so that the public can attend those that work. And I'm thinking that if there's going to be a lot more people than were there last time, we're probably going to have to move the meeting somewhere to a bigger facility. I don't know if this is available, but if it's not raining, we can just go sit in the plaza. We've done that before.
You might want to check with the fire district to see if that, their community room's available.
Because I'm pretty sure this would be available, this building, but I'll have to check with staff here and...
Mayor, Council, and committee members, if you're supportive, we will coordinate with the senior center, because I know the senior center and the director has taken an interest in the issue of homelessness. That may be a location that, you know, that's relatively close to City Hall, that we can accommodate, you know, additional crowd members or additional public members, should they be present. I can coordinate that with the director and the committee members, and we can make that change in location as part of noticing this special meeting, because we're going to change, we're changing the time anyway, so it has to be a special meeting, so we can also change the location.
Right, we just have to make sure everybody knows about that. And I'd also like to invite all you guys to stop by Tuesday mornings about 9:30 at Catholic Church on the south side of town, because there are a lot of groups that come together every Tuesday morning about 9:30. And I've caught some, I caught the last one. And it's very interesting, the different groups that are coming together to try and help solve this problem. So if you want an update on that, you should just go to the meeting.
Okay. Okay, any questions from council? All right, well, thank you for that report. Planning and Community Development, we have our Chair, Councilmember Bagby.
Yes, we will be meeting October 16th at 4:00 p.m.
Great, thank you.
Mayor, Council, just wanted to note for the council that the meeting time is going to be changed to 3:00 that day. Purpose of meeting, changing the meeting time is to accommodate the Planning Commission meeting that's going to be later that afternoon.
That's right. Got switched, okay.
Okay, so that'd be a special meeting as well?
That's correct.
Thank you. Okay, Public Works, our Chair is Vice Mayor Russell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Our next meeting will be November 27th at 10:30 a.m. at City Hall.
Okay, great, thank you. And the joint fire, city, district meeting here is, our next meeting's to be determined. We did not have a lot of items for the agenda, so our last meeting was canceled. So we'll need to identify a new date. And then joint city, school district, our next meeting again is to be determined, so we'll need to identify a date for that. So now we'll go to council reports. We'll start with our student liaison, Tucker. Welcome. Please speak into the mic so we can recapture it on tape.
Okay.
Everybody can hear you.
So for...
Pull that right up to you. Pull that mic right up to you, there.
For our first, this is high school news. The PSAT is tomorrow. Homecoming was a great success. The varsity and the JV team both won for football. And we just ended our six-week grading period just last week, I think, I believe. And high school students are able to go to the public library to get tutoring, which is pretty great. And the varsity football team is four and one, and the JV football team is undefeated. So that's pretty cool. And October 19th is senior night, and November 2nd is the Halloween dance for the first time in 10 years, so...
Excellent, thank you. And be sure, when you're at school, if you know of anybody that would be a good fit for our skate park ad hoc, we'd like to get at least two from the high school on that ad hoc. So if you could communicate that to our Assistant City Manager, and we really want somebody who's interested and really wants to participate.
Of course.
Thank you.
No problem.
Thank you. Okay, City Council reports, we have our written ones in the packet. Does anybody have something else? Yes, Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I just wanted to point out that I will be distributing... I just wanted to point out that I will be distributing the pothole report, which is the Bay Area Roads at Risk from Metropolitan Transportation Commission. As you know, I chair the Sonoma County Transit Authority Board and Regional Climate Protection Board, and this is a very interesting report. We had circulated the website, I think, a week or so ago, but I got a copy of the report, in case you haven't seen, had a chance to get on the website. And actually, Cloverdale did better than I thought we were going to do. And it's quite interesting to take a look at some of the places you don't expect to be in poor or sort of endangered condition. Very interesting to take a look at this all the way through the Bay Area. So, I'm going to circulate it, and it's good reading. And I delayed my report this week. I've been playing nurse, and if I do say so myself, doing rather well at it, pretty good. So, I'm going to ask Roz. Yeah, you're doing well, thank you. My wife, I had an operation, so I've been doing my nurse thing. And so far, I think she's suing me for unprofessionalism or something, but otherwise, you know, no good deed goes unpunished. But anyway, thank you.
That's quite a detailed report. Thank you.
I got, it's a report.
We'll move on to any other council reports?
Just, I'll have a question about the mayors and council members meeting.
Yeah, this is a good time to ask a question.
Okay. So, is the Vice Mayor planning on attending? Because I know that was a question on our last meeting. Are you going to mayors and council members on Thursday?
No, don't want to.
Okay, so...
So, we'll need to make...
No, I told them I can't go.
Oh, I thought you were going to let me know.
No, no, I said I can't.
So, if we could make sure we get a letter so Councilmember Bagby would be able to participate in the board, for the board meeting, and be a voting member for Cloverdale.
Good, thank you. That'll work great.
And then, let me know when that's done. I'll come down and sign it. Okay, perfect. Represent us.
I think I'm the only one going, so. Okay.
We'll be well represented. Thank you so much. Okay, any other city council reports? We'll move on then. The legislative report, is there anything to report? Nope. Okay, nothing to report. City manager, report.
Mayor, council members, just two items. I met with Reese Foxon, who is our representative on the Library Commission this morning. We are coordinating, the staff's coordinating with her, and we'll coordinate with the mayor on a presentation for the council, just providing an update on the library system. And, you know, we also had a preliminary discussion about potentially kicking off a capital campaign for the future expansion of the Cloverdale library system. More to come on that, but there was interest, and just wanted to share that early interest with the council. But I'm sure Reese will touch on that in her presentation. We'll coordinate that probably for the first meeting in November.
Okay, thank you. Anything else?
One other item, Mayor. We received a request from SMART to, for a letter of support for funding, grant funding for their positive system, positive braking system. And the staff has prepared that letter of support for the mayor's signature, and we will be sending that to Joanne, the grant manager at SMART, with the mayor's signature, after the mayor's signature this evening.
And if I might, Mr. Mayor?
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, just wanted to thank our city manager for moving quickly on that. We got, I think, just a few days' notice last week to get it in. I really appreciate it. It means a lot.
And I'd also like to thank you, because that's important. We want to see SMART get up to Cloverdale.
Got it.
Okay. City attorney, report? No, nothing to report. Okay, council, direction on future agenda items, anything? Okay, seeing none. We will adjourn until our next meeting will be Tuesday, October 23rd. Our closed session will be 5:00 at City Hall Conference, and our public business will be at 6:00 here at the Performing Arts. Thank you, everybody, for attending. Thank you, staff, for all your hard work. We are adjourned.